Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Public expression. Persons wishing to make the board aware of suggestions, ideas, and/or comments may address the board at this time. This portion of the meeting during which oral public comment is held shall be limited to twenty minutes. Comments that involve personnel or students must be discussed in private and will be limited to three minutes. Please keep comments appropriate and respectful. Public expression? Okay. We'll move on to Mrs. Barnes and her work-based learning group.
Yeah, if you don't mind, we'll jump, we'll jump straight to that. That way, if they would like to take off, they may. And I have your Canva, Mrs. Barnes, that you shared with me.
So I'm gonna go ahead and start talking. The first thing I have is just, if you guys wanted to pass this around the room, there's applications, stuff that I'm just gonna talk about briefly. So I'm really excited to have, you know, started a work-based learning program. We began with a research component last August to see how, you know, who was interested, how we would start to define boundaries for work-based learning. And then we spent the first semester researching work-based learning, what Indiana's conceptualization of work-based learning was. I attended several conferences, the initial grant process that we ended up deciding against because it really was, it has since been a good option based on who stayed in there. Working with area schools to give further boundaries, limits, see where we were. Applications went out in January. We ended up placing twenty-five percent of the senior class in a work-based learning placement. Basically, what I did is I broke it down into looking into the future with a class of 2029. We have enrollment seal for the new diploma, an employment seal, and a service seal. So I was trying to kill two birds with one stone by implementing the work-based learning program for the seniors, but also recognizing that we had to prepare for the class of 2029 with all of the hours that they needed for seal development. So I ended up with ten of our students are what I would call enrollment-focused. So they likely are going to go to college, and I should talk to you guys, I'm sorry. They're likely going to college. So our focus there was more of an internship-type of situation, really giving kids a leg up. Having taught the dual-credit courses through Indiana University now for seven-ish years, I have found that specifically like Purdue is getting more competitive. So obviously, they're landlocked. They can only accept so many people. I wanted to know how we could give our kids a leg up and go into those competitive places. But then also, we have our kids who just wanna work. So we have thirteen of those students placed. And again, in the future, we would call those the employment seals. So those would be our kids that are focused on going into the workforce. It's a mixture of paid and unpaid internships. So for example, today, Kenneth, who I would classify as an enrollment-focused, he's gonna go to college, but he actually makes pretty decent money at Thermocycler, making eighteen dollars an hour with Greg. So it is a mix for kids. And Mrs. Randall and I basically just worked. Every kid is unique, and we tried to work with their scheduling to see how much we could get them their hours. Kids who worked a little harder to make sure that they had credits in advance were able to get out for more hours during the day for their placement. And honestly, we have great kids, so it was, it was easy, but we were able to work with them individually. So prior to summer, we solidified placements. I worked out liability contracts with Katie Anderson. Prior to the school year, I met with students, their guardians, and then the placements for signatures on those liability contracts, as well as training plans for all of them, because again, with a class of 2029, we have to have training plans for every student. Every student. So that's gonna be a big undertaking. We downloaded an app called Homebase, which geocaches their location upon arrival. So it's their way to log their hours and keep them accountable for where they're supposed to be. So when they show up to their location, they go onto the app, they click login, and that shows me where they are. And then when they log out, it also shows me where they are. If I'm out on a weekend and I know kids are working, I can look at where they geocashed and I can go find them. One day, Wyatt Dahl, I knew which farm he was at, so I showed up one day. So it works really well. Mr. Shove helped me get that downloaded and purchased for a single year, but I did work with the company to get a discount for us at the time. We were also approved for the Cheryl Walter grant, so I kinda knew what I wanted to do with that, but we'll get to that later. My original goal was I wanted to meet with students two times during the semester. I have sixth and seventh periods. That was a really awesome undertaking in my brain, but teaching dual-credit classes, it takes a lot of my time. So I was able to see all of them once, a few of them twice, but then I'm going to revisit them second semester. It just is impossible to get there. Plus, I had some kids shift and move. And just for example, three weeks ago, John Krueger switched from Heinhold and Feller to the Lake County Co-op, so I had to drive to Crown Point to get signature. So some days, I just don't have time, because that was probably two hours of driving for me. So we were also able to find some additional funding, so we recoded some of our classes to get a little bit more funding for those. I created training plans and competencies to already go with what Mr. McCallum's doing and Mr. Bailey's doing for their classes, so that we could get a little bit more funding from the state. We ended up using the Cheryl Grant, the Cheryl Grant, Cheryl Walter grant to purchase Casey's gift cards for gas. So when a kid is doing really well, I call them out on Facebook. I say, "Thank you guys so much for doing such a great job." Give them a twenty-five-dollar gas card, and they are, they are really excited about that. I'm almost through, I'm almost through my first cycle of those. We also give shout-outs to placements on Facebook. We wanna give them their due diligence as well. Then I had to kind of transition over to the work-based learning program, starting with the class of 2029, because they have to gain hours by the time they graduate. And some of those hours are pretty extensive. So looking at the employment focus for the Honors Plus seal, that student would have to gain seven-hundred hours of work-based learning by the time they graduate, which does seem like a lot, but just for example, Trevor Bomar is over nine-hundred right now, but Trevor is a course. So I don't know if I would classify him as the norm. He just happens to be someone who wants to work all the time. So it's possible. So what I did is I came up with a plan to get kids to seventy-five hours by the time they get to their senior year. And if you happen to see the differences in the seals, that basically guarantees them that they can do anything they want their senior year. So they'll be guaranteed seventy-five hours. We will work together to do that. I've met with all the freshman classes with Mrs. Randall. We also have had two parent nights to inform them about the new requirements. And I start individual meetings with freshmen, starting in January. So for the class of 2009, they filled out a Google form, and then that's when we'll start to go through those specifics for them to see. So for example, I might have a kid who babysits. If I can get them a certification, let's say CPR, or make a connection with a class that they're taking, let's say they take child development through the virtual lab, that's enough of the component that I can make mix for work-based learning. I just have to have twenty-five hours of an experience. It has to be under one umbrella, has to have a professional involved. The wonderful thing about South Central is PLTW classes are gonna be huge for that. All of Mr. Seifer's classes, Mr. Bailey's classes, and almost everything FFA does qualifies for work-based learning hours. So that's what we're sifting through right now. I also wanna just say how proud I am of South Central, because no other school, and I genuinely, I mean this, every time I go somewhere for this, they're not anywhere close to where we are. A lot of people don't even have their training plans together. And so when we filled out our interns in October, we were able to check all those boxes and get it done, and that's how we were able to get the funding as high as we could, but as quickly as we could, because nobody, there were schools who still didn't have training plans together. Looking forward, we want to expand that to aiding. We recognize that we have a lot of students who are aides. We can make those work-based learning hours. We can either classify that as classroom time, working with a teacher, that's the professional standpoint, or we can use that time for some micro-internship. So hey, you have this hour that you're an aide, but you're kind of interested in this. Let me get you somewhere, not for the whole semester, but for several hours to see if you're even interested in pursuing this idea. We also wanna expand our network. I have a pretty good network of people right now, but I'm constantly meeting people, talking to people, adding them to the roster to keep our networking expansive. And I wanna keep finding and utilizing grant money to keep this at a zero or minimal cost, to keep it effective moving forward. I'm gonna simplify the contracts. You'll see in the folder, that was all paper, and we're gonna go digital, so that way we're not wasting as much paper moving forward. Today, I have brought four individuals. We have Lillian Clark, Ava Fosseauer, Alexis Jonas, and Kenneth Herny. And just real quick, what you guys are seeing back here was actually created by two freshman young ladies, Kendall Webb and Reese Lauk?
Like.
Sorry, like, the name looks new to me, like. And they, I reached out to freshmen, I said, "Hey, someone in a computer class who's interested in doing this, and then this, once it's complete, I have one more image to get." We'll go to Mr. Budka, and then we will upload that onto the website, and they will actually get twenty-five hours toward their freshman stuff. And then also, on this Friday, we're hosting Hospitality Room for all work-based learning placements and students, to recognize them at the basketball game. And then Ms. Diesel Harden's class is making desserts for that. The PTO is handling dinner. And then I have additional kids who are working on digital displays for the gym, for the placement. So they'll gain hours. And I also have kids working the hospitality room for additional hours. So we've got a lot going on. I didn't know if maybe you'd like to hear briefly from our kiddos and...
Absolutely.
Yeah, absolutely. So let's go ahead and start with Lillian.
My name's Lillian Clark, and I aided in the Resource Room with Wendy Walter, Stacy Pugh, and Laura Van Worden. And at the beginning of August, I put in my, I put in mine, I got accepted into Ball State's dual-major for special education, for advanced special education, K through six. So at the end of that, I'll have my license to teach special education or regular education, K through six. And I plan to use that in advanced special needs. In my experience in work-based learning, I've learned about IEPs. I've learned about developmental delays and how it works, and how to test out of them. I've learned how children in the Resource Room learn differently, and how I can teach them, and what best works for them. I've learned how to teach in general, and how wonderful that can be. I've learned how phonics and mathematics skills and social skills work for them. I've learned how to use resources like Canva, YouFly, FastForward. And I used Canva to make an I-Learn checkpoint to practice for our third graders, which I hear has been a big hit. And I've learned how to use different exercises to calm and deal, calm down and deal with misbehavior in the classroom. And the most important thing I've learned from my work-based learning is to how, is how to be patient with the kids, because they just don't work like normal kids do. And I feel that that is how they are misunderstood the most. And that is why we need places like the Resource Room. Because when my kids come into my classroom, they act differently, because they are given more tools than they are given in their classroom. And the work-based learning, work-based learning has given me that opportunity to see that with my own eyes. And I think everyone should see that. And it was a really, it really drove me to pick what my career was going to be. I've always worked with kids with different needs. I teach them musicals, so this wasn't new to me. But teaching them things like their ABCs and how to count was a lot different than teaching them how to do a jazz square. And I do like it a lot better. And I wanna have my own classroom one day and teach my own kids. And if, starting at the baseline within I, with I-Learn checkpoint practice made on Canva, is what work-based learning can teach me now in its first years, then I can't imagine what it's gonna be able to teach kids if it continues to grow. That's all.
Very nice. Thank you.
Next, we have Ava Fosseauer.
My name's Ava. My placement is with Caitlin Seeley at Seeley Interiors in Port. So far throughout this year, I have gone through her material library, so I've learned how to look up materials on vendor websites to see if they're discontinued or not. I've ordered new samples for her. One of the most exciting things that I did was, over fall break, I believe, we took a trip up to Chicago to go to the merchandise mart, where they have a bunch of different vendors. The first floor of that building is available to the public, but I got to go up to the top floors, where only businesses are allowed. So that was really cool. I got to pick out some of my own fabric samples, so I have my own little material library now, thanks to Caitlin. I've also learned additional rabbit skills in addition to the ones that I learned at Mr. Seifer's Civil Engineering and Architecture class that started this year. I love my placement. I have a lot of fun. And next semester, Caitlin's putting together a mock project for me to do, so I can work through all the things that I've learned by myself and kind of put them together into one thing. And...
What do you do next year?
I was gonna say that.
I was gonna, so sorry.
Next year, I will be attending Kansas State University to earn my Master's in Interior Architecture. So I was accepted into their AP Design Program. So next year, I'll start with the first year of that, which is in Environmental Design, so I get a little bit of interior architecture, architecture, landscape architecture, urban planning, a little bit of everything. And then once I get into my second semester, freshman year, and further on, I get more specific into interior architecture, which is my main goal.
That's exciting.
Nice. Thank you.
And we have Alexis Jonas.
Hi, I'm Alexis. I work with a large animal vet at New Prairie Ventry Services, Doc Smith. I have, ever since I was little, I've always wanted to do this, so when I heard about this, I jumped on the opportunity. I have done a lot of stuff. I've done, from small things to just holding the animals while Doc does examinations or gives vaccines. I've refilled vaccines myself, and then we, I have witnessed surgeries and how those happen. We've been a lot of places. There is a buffalo farm, mountain portage. That was the last place I've been. Went out there, and I worked the shoots. I worked the shoot there. And then we've gone all the way to Buchanan, Michigan, for cows. We've been there for pigs. There are times when people will come to the office, and I'll hold the animals and help with vaccinations there. I've been accepted to four pre-vetinary programs at four different colleges, and I've also been accepted for a biology major in IUSB. I have learned so much. I, I always knew that I wanted to be a large animal vet. This kind of like sealed the deal, 'cause I always had this thought in the back of my head, well, what if something happens? And I just don't know what to do or don't want to. We, I have almost let out a cow in the middle of a procedure one time. And I was just told what to do next time, what to do better, and I was like, okay. Probably one of the worst things that I've ever done. But it's okay. And it's, this has helped me so much. And yeah, I've, I've learned so much. Yeah.
I wanted to just call Alexis out too.
Thank you.
Listen, Alexis, like, petrified of talking to people who she does not know. And I was so proud of her. For, she, getting with a large, like, a large animal vet is impossible. And she did not stop until she found somebody willing to work with her. And I was so nervous, and it ended up being the perfect placement for her. And then finally, we have Kenneth Herny.
So the place I do my work-based learning, it's called Thermocycler. It's in Union Mills, right down Hamilton Street, right there. And what they do is industrial heating equipment. They go from nothing to a built unit, and they send it out to people. And the person I work under is Greg. He is the CEO, but he's also the head engineer. He went to Purdue for engineering. And my big project so far is they have a code that, a program that does all the math for like, what size unit you need, how much air is moving through the building, how much are you losing through cracks in the building, if you have overhead doors, how much are you using them, and how do we need to take that into account when you're getting a furnace? And it hadn't been updated since 2012. So me and Greg got together at the end of last school year, and he kind of told me what he wanted me to do. So this summer, through Ivy Tech, I took like a pre-coding course, just so I wasn't completely thrown into the deep end, having no clue what I was doing. So this whole time, I've been learning not just how to code it, but first, he taught me how to like actually use what was already there. So he taught me how to read blueprints, how to enter stuff into the code, how to do engineering drawings, 'cause sometimes they just kind of describe the building to you, which isn't a whole lot of usefulness, but it is what it is. And I've been completely recoding the program. I think I'll be done by January, maybe, hopefully. But it's kind of been a long progress, process. But it's taught me so much about like, how to think about these things, because you're like, well, I'll just change this, and then it completely messes up everything else. And you're like, eh, maybe I can't do it that way. But he also has been teaching me like the business side of things, not just the engineering side of things. I've been answering phone calls. I've been helping customers. He, me and him are talking about, he wants to teach me how to do tech calls on units, just because he's the only one that knows how to do that, and it would help him a lot if I could take those when they keep piling up. So that's something I'm kind of looking forward to. When Ms. Barnes started talking about work-based learning, I wasn't really interested at first. And I was like, I don't know if I wanna do that. I really like my electives and my slough-off classes. To sit around and talk with my friends, and it's really kind of easy. But the more she talked about it, especially in speech class, where like, we, it was a lot of kind of working through your stuff with her one-on-one. She talked to me about it, and she eventually convinced me to do it. And it's probably been one of the best decisions I could've made for my senior year. Like she said, I'm paid, so that definitely helps. That's nice. But the experience, like, when I first started work-based learning, I was dead-set on my career path of, oh, I just wanna go to engineering school and, and just go to engineering school, get an engineering job, and that's it. But after, after talking to Greg, my boss, and Ms. Barnes, I've kind of come up with a completely different plan. I wanna go for patent law, which means you have to go for an engineering degree, and then go to law school and pass the patent bar exam. And the reason that work-based learning kind of helped me through that was because Greg has multiple patents that he's designed stuff for and gotten. And he kind of was talking to me about how it'd be impossible for him to do all that paperwork and stuff by himself, just 'cause of how involved of a process it is. So he set me up with his patent lawyer, and we've emailed back and forth lots of times. He's based out of Indy, so we haven't gotten to meet in person. It's just been over email. But it's really helped me kind of decide what I wanted to do. I've gotten into probably four or five colleges for engineering, so Greg's definitely helped me with that. He's written me letters of recommendation, kind of told me what engineering schools are looking for on the applications, which helped in the application process. And it's really just been a great opportunity to help me for when I get out of high schools.
Just the very last thing I wanted to say was, the, the reason I didn't have any employment-focused kids today is really just because they're at work. And the best example of that is John Krueger. He's now full-time, and he'll get an actual full-time offer with benefits starting in March for the Co-op. So he drives trucks, and he's been killing it. So that's just one example. But those kids are just putting in the hours, so none of them are available to come tonight. But I am appreciative of everybody being able to come, so, thank you, guys.
What a great opportunity.
Thank you.
You have a lot that are driven towards what they've went towards. And is there any that have went towards something and have not liked it? Not that that's a failure, because a lot of people get out in the real world, and they think they're gonna do something, and they get there, and then either they're miserable and quit, or they're miserable and they stay, so...
So I was at New Prairie for eight years before I came to South Central, thirteen years ago. Yeah, thirteen, wow, that's, that's been very long. But I ran the Senior Exit Project there, so they still do that. But the focus was always, you know, if we have one kid who decides what they don't wanna do, it's a win. So we did have Addie Swingo. Unfortunately, she saw someone pass away. Her rotation is at Northwest Health. That was rough on her. She decided that she probably couldn't work in that part of the hospital, but she has a game plan. She actually just stopped by yesterday morning. So we worked out a plan to not spend a bunch of money, but to kind of keep it a generalized license. And then, 'cause she really loved the NICU, specifically the lactation nurse. She's very excited about that. So that's been her favorite placement for rotation. And you have just some kids who, you know, they're like, maybe that's not exactly the place for me. But they've gotten quick shifts, so they, they wanted to stick with the program, just making a change. And so I've had two of those. And really, for the most part, the rest of them, at least for now, are happy, but they have other plans. So like, they might be waiting for the union applications to open up over the summer. That's kind of their goal. So they've got a place card for now. A lot of our kids are welding, so they're just waiting for this rest of their certifications to come.
A great opportunity.
I feel like Craig's sitting back there thinking what he could've done if when they had...
I was, I saw Craig, and I thought, my gosh, I wish Craig could've had that.
Oh, he would've been perfect.
He would've been.
Yes.
I love that. Just general comment here, I was sitting here listening to all this, and I thought, that was awesome. What, what we would've done with that.
Yeah.
Yeah, you guys are super lucky. Don't take that for granted. I guess you'll have a, when you're a few years older, like I am out of school, you have a jumpstart like this. This is amazing.
So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you guys very much for coming to share today. And I wanna give a special thanks to Mrs. Barnes for helping this off the ground. And, you know, as I like to say, like, she's done it the right way. You know, there's, you know, and not to throw stones, but I mean, there are a lot of situations where there are schools that just kind of, yeah, put them in work-based learning. Yeah, throw, you know, throw them there. And as she kind of alluded to earlier, there's a lot of times where she's been in meetings or gone to events and stuff, where people have no idea what the requirements actually are, even though they're, they're doing work-based learning. And so we've put an emphasis on that, and Mrs. Barnes put a lot of time into getting this off the ground. And having, you know, a quarter of the, twenty-five percent of the senior class doing it this year for year one is, is awesome.
Okay, so what about the junior class, what do we have?
Yeah.
Yeah, so right now, we're just opening it up to seniors. Quite frankly, it's just a lot of undertaking for one person. I, you know, I'm very ambitious, but... We can't do all those things of the hours in a day. So we have talked about opening, but I think the better idea to keep costs down, but also to maximize, you know, the time our kids is using those aiding times to kind of push some additional movement for them. So, you know, you're a junior, you have an aiding experience, let's get you into a micro-internship. So that will, I think, be better use of their time and the corporation's money, I think. And then, you know, maybe one day down, down the road, it opens up bigger. But right now, I think that that's a good goal for kids, is to say, my senior year, I want to do this. I think that that would be something nice for them to report.
Something to earn and look forward to, yeah, absolutely.
And juniors may have some more requirements that they have to take during that.
Yeah, and honestly, seniors, I, Mrs. Randall, I cannot say enough good things. She really did work with me. Actually, all four of them can attest. Actually, all four of them can attest. If they were like, hey, could I get more time? Or can I, you know, I noticed that he does more stuff in the afternoon. Could we, he does more complex surgeries or something, can I do that? And the nice thing is, you have kids who have net requirements. So you can say, yeah, let's do that. Let's get you into the virtual lab, take that class as quickly as you possibly can. That last requirement, let's get you another hour out the door. They might also use that hour for additional Ivy Tech coursework that kind of gets them that extra credit that they need in order to do X, Y, Z. So we've done so many different things for all twenty-five kids, yeah.
Are they on the job, these kids, about three hours a day? Or what, or they just varies?
Real quick, how many hours a day do you go?
I work from eight to ten every day.
Okay.
First and second hour. I'm nine to eleven.
Okay. I'm about seven to eleven.
Okay.
And then we have afternoons, we have some in the middle. We kind of have them all over the place. And the home base keeps them safe, keeps our check-ins on everything.
Do they get paid for these hours that they work?
So I would say, so a hundred percent of our employment-focused kids are getting paid.
Okay.
Their replacements were specifically for that. But gosh, I don't, I think only, I think only Kenneth gets paid for the collegiate aspect of it. And that's a big get, that's not normal to have an internship, even at a collegiate level. That's pretty abnormal. So Greg, he came in clutch on that. He was a great guy to work with, so.
The ambition is, instead of sitting in a study hall or something else that, you know what I mean? The initiative you show to go and do that, that's huge.
Well, I like it because you can try something before you get to college and start, oh, a semester, and then you waste it, I don't want to do that anymore, you know? You, you know what you want maybe when you're going in. It's great, thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you all very much.
You're more than welcome to say if you'd like. However, if you want to take off, feel free. So thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Awesome.
Okay, we'll move on. That's Mr. Anderson, I think. The resolution to change.
Yeah, so the resolution to change the reorganization plan of the South Central Community School Corporation Board members. So Newbie Lewis Kaminski-Jones, Katie Anderson has been working on this for us. Essentially, just for everyone out there, so we're, we're trying to, right now, we have board members that get elected and they wait a year to take their seat. It's pretty abnormal, but it was in the original, you know, like the founding documents of the school corporation. So it's been that way forever. But we're, the board would like to make it where you get elected in November, you take your seat in January. There's no wait for a year anymore. So that's what this is. So Mrs. Anderson has put together a resolution that is in the packet tonight. I can let her review that real quick, but basically, it's, it's in your packet. And if you approve, then she will work on the legal requirements to put the plan in action. And then it'll take some time to get to the point where we are, all five members, you know, elected in November, take their seat in January. But do I give a high-level overview of that? Or does anyone have any questions specific to?
No, we kind of talked about it previously.
Something we didn't want to do for a long time.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's been years.
Yeah, so if you guys approve that today and, and sign off on it, then we have, within ten days, we publish it, publish a notice. So we just kind of attach a notice at the top of the thing that you guys sign and put that in the, we do the regional news, yeah. And then there's a hundred and twenty days after that. If any voter doesn't like it, then they have the opportunity to either file a petition to protest or they can submit an alternative plan, if they've got one. After that, a hundred and twenty days expires, then we file it with the DOE. The DOE then can have sixty days to adopt it, revise it, or combine some sort of combination of alternative plans. So if there's no objections in step two, and then the DOE approves it in step four, it's changed. If not, there's a special election. So I don't, I don't know why anybody would oppose it, but that's.
I don't, I don't know many that have this like we do, from what we understand by talking to others, so.
Yeah, there are some out there. We've, you know, we've looked at some of those. Surprisingly, there are a handful out there, for whatever reason, but.
I could never find why we had it in the first place, other than when they elected at primaries or something.
I think it had something to do with staggering people coming in on the board.
Well, we still have.
We still have a staggering.
Yeah, we still have a staggering. Three and two. Yeah, you'd have a full board being replaced.
Yeah, I don't know. I, I looked at that initial document and there was no indication of why.
So I've been a part of both, where I was on longer and then I did have to wait. So I mean, but this makes it more, I guess, simple.
Yeah, so as long as the board is still good with moving forward, then you can take action tonight. And then Katie in her office will.
Do I hear a motion to, make a motion to change the reorganization plan?
I'll make that motion.
Second?
I'll second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay? Motion carried.
Okay, very good. I'll work with Mrs. Anderson and we'll, we'll get moving on that.
Okay. Third Amendment to the 2019 cash management agreement.
So this is our agreement with Everwise Credit Union. Back in 2019, the school corporation switched from First Source Bank to, well, at the time, was Teachers Credit Union. They have since changed their name to Everwise Credit Union, but same people, same bank, same everything. So this would just be an updated agreement to continue our services with Everwise Credit Union. Essentially, status quo, the, the interest rate is, is a variable rate. So the amount, you know, of interest we receive on the funds that sit in the bank varies from, you know, from month to month, you know, as interest rates are coming down a little bit. You know, in the real world, they're coming down, in our world as well. So, you know, it's, that's sort of normal, but they go off of the, the federal rate. So it's not like they're playing games with us or just picking and choosing. They use the federal rate and that's the rate we get for our return on investment. But we've had great success working with Everwise Credit Union. They're, you know, easy to work with, they've been really good to us. So this would be a, did we do a two-year?
Two.
So the one that's in your packet tonight is a two-year continuation of our existing agreement. So we would ask for your, we would request your action on that tonight.
Questions, comments? Or hear a motion to accept this cash management agreement?
I'll make the motion.
Second?
I'll second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion carried. Resolution regarding the use of public records.
Yeah, so this is kind of an interesting one. There are more and more, I guess, companies or organizations out there that send school corporations and public entities, like these wild public records requests, or, you know, like the APRA request. And they basically want, you know, all of your financial information, which it is public record. So that's not the concern. The concern that comes in is then they start selling your information. They literally have like a website where there's a platform. So they ask you for your information. They try to get like your email addresses for all your staff members. They can send you spam or send you sales pitches and stuff like that. And then they put all your information on, you know, on the web and they effectively sell it. So I know more and I've talked to more and more superintendents where the school corporations have adopted a resolution where companies may not use it for, to sell. They can still request the information. And of course, if it's legitimate, you know, then we fulfill those requests. It's all public information and a lot of it's accessible on Gateway anyway. But when they send these, you know, kind of overbearing ones where they, they want everything and then they put it on a website and sell it, there's law that allows the school board to adopt a resolution against that. And so Newbie Lewis Kaminski-Jones had already drafted a resolution for, I think, the city of Lepore and Lepore Community School Corporation, among others. And so it'd be my recommendation that we do the same so that we're not, you know, that Buzz and Emily or whoever aren't spending exorbitant amounts of time collecting information to send to these people to, to sell or, you know, put on their website. Again, that is, you know, nothing to do with anybody local or anything like that. Everything's still accessible, it's all public record.
So they ask for the information, but do you have to say, I'll give it to you? I mean, I know it's public, but do you have to make it easier for them to just get it all from you and they don't have to dig it out themselves?
Well, yeah, so basically, we're doing the work for them, and then they're selling it.
Do we have to do that?
Not if we know that they are doing it for, like, to sell. Like if we know, like Katie was able to get on the website.
Promotional campaign.
Yeah, the company that recently sent us a request. She clearly saw that it, you know, they, they sell the information. And so she was, you know, able to correspond with them and let them know that.
So if they can't sell it, they're probably not going to ask you for anything. That'd be a lot less work than for.
Right. Yeah, so.
If they want it, then go get it anyways, but.
Yeah, yeah, they can go get it themselves if they want.
Save us some headaches. And, you know, it has nothing to do with anyone local or, you know, anything like that. It's, what was it, was it out in New Jersey or something, this company?
Yeah, it was, I don't know.
It was an East Coast company that sent us the most recent one, so.
And our firm had had correspondence with this guy previously with a different school. So they clearly just must, yeah, look up all the schools in the area and send out their requests.
So we just like to make it official. If the board would consider passing that resolution, then we don't have to worry about it.
Okay. I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Okay, all those in favor, aye.
Aye.
As opposed? Nay? No more sales off us. Okay, let's go to Mr. Buzz Show.
All right, so the resolution to authorize 2025 year-end transfers. What that is, is inside every fund, right? So let's just take like the education fund, for example. You, you can overexpend one part of it, based off of what you've budgeted for. So what that year-end transfer does is it takes it from another source that maybe you underspent it in the same fund. So, you know, if I, if I took a, when I did the budget, if I overestimated how much we would spend on preschool teacher salaries, but, but underestimated how much we would spend in high school teacher salaries, it would take the amount that I'm off of the high school teacher salaries and pull it from the preschool teacher salaries or whatever. So it's fund within fund, but it makes it so everything zeros itself out.
So a limit to doing that?
So, so it only, so it only will allow you to do it with inside the fund. So, you know, the operations funds, your, your operations fund, your education fund are kind of the bigger two funds. And then obviously, with debt service and rainy day are the other two that you're allowed to do that with. We don't obviously, you know, debt service is pretty standard on why it's set the way it is. And then rainy day, we try not to touch. So it really only affects the education and operations fund, but it's going to be very minimal. If I looked at the report, I looked at the report from last year's. I think the highest value on there was like a hundred and seventy-seven dollars that it ended up transferring from. So it's, it's a pretty minimal amount. I would credit myself to, you know, just being awesome at the budget, but.
Of course.
But it just, it just gives me, it just allows me to make that available. So we don't have a negative balance going in when I roll it over at the beginning of the year, when I roll that over. You don't want any negatives, because then it's going to take it out of your new appropriations. So you want them to be zero, so your new appropriations are, are correct.
Okay, sounds good.
Questions? Need a motion to accept this resolution to authorize the transfers?
Aye, well.
Second? Second? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion carried.
So the second thing there, the liability of insurance and updates renewal. So we, we have liability insurance through McGowan. And Craig, Craig's here to kind of run that down for you on what the, what the proposal is. And we're just going to look at trying to get that approved.
So you know, one year ago, we switched from Headed Hat Group to McGowan and have a local friendly face here, who's a South Central alum, who's our, our agent now. And so we've been in good communication with Craig and his office these last few weeks. And all things considered, in a volatile insurance world, Craig's done a, done a good job for us. So I'll let him review that real quick.
Yeah, thank God. Oh, you got it? This one needs updating.
Oh, okay.
I've got some beautiful updates for you. Yeah, as Mr. Anderson mentioned, you know, I'm super thankful for the opportunity to work with you guys. And last year, being the first year, I think it went pretty smoothly. You guys don't require a lot of attention throughout the year.
That's good.
So that is a good thing.
We don't want to draw attention to ourselves.
Thank you.
We got a few more coming for you guys. So yeah, our biggest concern coming into the renewal is obviously making sure that we're retaining the same type and level of coverages and then making sure that we can stay in control of your guys' premiums. Did everybody, I have one outline and then it should be the full proposal package. But this year in particular, I think some of the most important things that we were concerned about was addressing some coverage increase needed to cover the Student Activity Center that was built and then for the new additions to high school and elementary. The insurance companies do give us a buffer every year, about ten percent. So they give us some flexibility on when we need to add coverage for, you know, new additions, new buildings, stuff like that. That's pretty standard. So that was a particular area of interest we wanted to address and increase. And as we did last year, we took the, the coverage out to market and received bids from different carriers. You guys can kind of see on the outline, the single-page document, the different offers that we received. So Astra is the insurance company that's providing the package policy, which includes most of the coverages that you guys would be familiar with. And then Astra also provided the umbrella liability or access liability coverage. And that was last year. Eastern Alliance provided the work comp policy. And then this year, we requested a workers' compensation quote from Astra, as well as AmTrust. And then we received another alternative quote on the cyber insurance portion, along with a renewal quote from Astra. So that's a lot to go through, but we want to make sure that you guys understand that we didn't just come in and work with you guys and let it rest. We want to make sure that we're taking your guys' business out, all the carriers that are interested in seeking who's the best in the market right now. That's what we did. We took, we knew that those carriers were most competitive in the market for you guys, so we took those out to them. And the results can kind of be seen in the later portions of that sheet. There's an expiring section that you guys can see the comparison of the premiums in 2025 versus 2026. And you can see the percentage of change. I would say the biggest area that affected your guys' premiums for the 2026 renewal was the addition of the Student Activity Center and additions to the high school and elementary side. As far as the other lines of business went, I think we saw some really good renewal rates come in, which is good news, because I think, as you guys recall historically, that the rates have increased pretty significantly. So this year, you can kind of see, the package policy was up ten percent, again, due to the buildings that were built this year. The umbrella or access liability insurance did go up. That's a real, I guess, I can say challenging portion of the market right now. Liability insurance for all schools is on the rise. And we paid special attention to that. We did go out for other quotes, but didn't receive any in that time. So there are other companies out there doing that, but it's very hard to find someone that's better unless they're looking at the whole school package. As far as the cyber insurance and the work comp goes, this year, the workers' compensation actually decreased by three hundred and sixty dollars, which is like one percent. Which is great news, because our payroll exposures went up nine point five percent. So in all reality, if things would stay the same, that premium would went down, which I think is a surprising thing for most people. But we're thankful for the growth of SC, because, you know, with that growth, all the teachers and payrolls and stuff, we get to hear about the work-based learning program. we get to hear about the work-based learning program. But as far as the cyber insurance goes, uh, this year, we were able to obtain a quote with the exact same coverages with a lower deductible and wording that's specific to, uh, public school systems. So I think that was a big plus. It broadens coverage for the administration. I think that's a, a huge upside compared to where we worked for. Not to mention it also decreased in premium. So...
I have a question on the cyber. With our cyber, is there guidelines that we have to follow to be, for the rates that we get? Is, I'm assuming that's protection on our internet and...
Yes, yes.
And, and it's went, I'm just, I'm not complaining, but I'm just surprised with the cy- or the cyber. It's only gone up so much with everything in the AI and...
Yeah, cyber insurance is probably the quickest growing segment of insurance, I would say right now, for the exact reason you just said, AI is everywhere. What, what I would say on that note is the protections that you guys have in place through the IT team are probably the most important. And these insurance companies are reviewing those. I know Derek was able to go through there a variety of times and I appreciate your help. Uh, they ask very detailed questions, many questions. I have absolutely no idea what they're asking, but I know that Derek is. So, uh, there are a lot of things that they're looking for as far as protections and they want to understand exactly what, uh, you guys are utilizing the internet and computer systems for. Probably the biggest exposures that we're seeing in the cyber world come from the financial side of things. A lot of the large claims like ransom and things like that have to deal with, uh, banking. It is mostly what we see then. You know, kind of like what Mr. Anderson mentioned about people collecting data. Someone sends a teacher an email, they can get onto the servers and wreak all sorts of havoc and can even tie up bank account funds and that's never a good situation. But what the cyber protection insurance does is they can help pay to, um, set back up, you know, the technology, um, the servers, all sorts of things, and it can also pay for hand symptoms. So there, there's a lot to it. But, uh, it's, it's more likely now in two thousand twenty-five that you'll be attacked, um, you know, a cyber situation than it is to have your house burned down. So it's arguably a more important coverage as far as...
I'll make that insurance.
And, and just so you don't freak out, most of the time your homeowner's policy doesn't... A small, small level, nothing, nothing to the extent that the school one.
Yeah.
Don't freak out there. And I want to make sure I go over, uh, these sections here, just so you guys know. But last year and two thousand twenty-five, the expenditure for the insurance program totaled a hundred and thirty-five thousand, three hundred and forty-six dollars. And this year, uh, our renewal offers come in at a hundred and forty-four thousand, six hundred and eighty-two dollars. So that's an increase of nine thousand, three hundred and thirty-six, uh, which is six point nine percent. And, uh, again, I think, I just want to make sure you guys know that, uh, we worked really hard this year on that, as I promised. I think this is a great renewal and I think the biggest thing to attribute to the increase this year is the building of your guys' facilities. And I think that's a great reason to have an increase, if we're going to be...
Yeah, I mean, six point, it's not like we had a six point nine percent increase in insurance. We increased, so it might be down to a one percent, but we added additional square footage to be insured.
Correct.
Yeah, because our coverage is going up.
Five point nine percent.
Almost six million dollars just between, you know, the additions, inflation, et cetera. But, you know, if you look at our coverages from, from two years ago, you know, the, the total like blanket building coverage was fifty-nine million, three hundred and ninety-nine thousand, and it's, uh, it's up to seventy-three million, almost five hundred thousand. Uh, you know, and, you know, having done a small project here recently, like if, God forbid, you know, a tornado came through and ripped this building down or something, it's going to cost every bit of seventy-five million dollars to, to put it, you know, or seventy-three-five to put it back up. So I'd say that that is, you know, we've seen some sharp increases in coverage as far as like those numbers, but it's reality too. So, um...
You haven't seen a whole lot of insurance going down. You know, just that's the sad part.
What's a typical increase for other corporations you work with that haven't done a recent project or entities our size?
Sure, sure. Well, gosh, it varies so much. I would say this year on school systems, we, we're seeing mid to high single-digit increases across the board. Uh, with you guys in particular, and I've gotten to build a good relationship with a fellow from Astra, who is your guys' main insurance carrier. And they really specialize in schools your guys' size. So they were pretty aggressive with the pricing. Um, and really and truly, you guys fit their target market, so to speak, very well. They like schools that are more rural, uh, not as huge, you know, not nine locations, um, single campus. They really like your guys' size and scope. So I think that the renewal couldn't have been, I mean, it always could have been better in some, some, uh, different realm. But I think that what we brought in was very good. And to bring in something that increased six point nine percent, including the increased exposures of the buildings, I think was very, very good. We were happy to see that. We don't see that on average school, so...
Craig, what was the change on workers' comp from, like, earlier in the week?
Yes.
To this?
Great question, yes. Um, so earlier in the week, we were working on those workers' compensation quotes and we noticed that they were quoted with exposures on the payroll that were lower than what your guys' audited.
Okay.
So we anticipated a much lower workers' comp quote. And as I was reviewing it, just in preparation for this, uh, in the fine print, I was like, I think that these payrolls are decreased from last year. So as I reviewed it further, we found out that the payrolls that were quoted by Eastern Alliance, um, were actually from, I believe, two years ago. So we corrected that with them and that's the, that's the change that buzzed and that I received. We, we discussed this prior, so that's why I provided these updated ones, because that'll show the whole scope of what it looks like today. What we, really what that change came down to was we believe that our payrolls were about five hundred and fifty thousand dollars below where they should have been to represent, I guess, the correct payrolls for the year.
Okay, I'm glad you got that fixed.
Yeah. And, and the reason that's important to do now is if we didn't change that now, we would have seen an audit bring in, be charged. And as we discussed, that's not what we want to do is, uh, you know, increase the amount of money we have to spend later in the year. Let's know what we're going to pay now and pay it and then we don't have an issue. So that's where that came from. I'm happy to discuss.
Thank you.
Any other questions you guys have?
I didn't, we knew it was coming.
Yeah, but if there aren't any other questions, um, Mr. Schoeffen, I have a request your consideration for approval so that we can close things out here and get ready for two thousand twenty-six with McGowan.
I'm going to motion to accept this renewal for liability insurance.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay?
Thank you all.
Thank you, Craig.
If you ever have any questions, feel free to call names, I'm right here. So not very far away if you have any. Thank you all.
It won't be more needy, right?
What's that?
It will be needy.
You can be more needy. We got a new bus stand, so that's...
Thank you, we appreciate you.
Thank you. Consent agenda and claims, uh, payroll claims eleven-five, eleven-six, eleven-twenty and eleven-twenty-four, all of two thousand twenty-five. And vendor, uh, fund transfer claims seven-one, seven-zero-eight through seven-one, seven-nine-three. Questions or comments on the consent agenda or the claims? Your motion to accept?
I'll make that motion.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion carried. Donations to the cafeteria for negative lunch balance, two thousand dollars from Brody Schoffner. That's amazing. Accept donations? Your motion?
I'll make the motion.
Second?
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion carried. Principals report.
Okay, all right. Mr. Kimmel, would you like to go first?
Um, good evening. Um, there's a lot going on this time of year. There's always a lot going on in elementary, but this time of year is like, Santa's on his way, so we got to get ready. Holiday shop behind the, the other door over there. Um, so our BTO is working really hard and all the kids get to go through and then buy stuff for their family. And then they're also wrapping gifts and so they're doing a great job for us. And that'll go throughout the rest of this week. Our Christmas winter holiday program, uh, for our first and fourth graders is a week from tonight. So six o'clock in the south gym, um, I'll see some Christmas favorites and, and it'll be a, a good program. Mrs. Intagliata has been preparing them for this program, so we're looking forward to that. We have our annual Christmas sing-along the Friday before break, so about one-thirty, we'll be in the north gym. And we will also have our Olive, the Other Reindeer STEM project. It's where students, uh, in their grade levels, uh, create slays for Olive and a paper airplane. They throw them and see how far they can go. And then our finalists compete against each other with the whole school watching and we measure it and, and we get, we get winners from that. So that'll be part of the Christmas sing-along too. We added that a few years ago and it's a fun competition. So if you want to, uh, come sing with us, it'll be about one-thirty. And then by the end, it's just screaming because the bell is about to go off and it's, it's so, it's wonderful.
Believe it.
Fifth and sixth grade basketball season is wrapping up. Um, both teams, uh, fifth and sixth boys, each team has had a great season. Uh, fifth grade has shown a lot of improvement, um, and they're playing very well. They just won, uh, the, the tournament at OD, uh, last weekend. And sixth grade has been dominant all year. Um, they, uh, have a perfect record and they just won the OD tournament. They will be in tournaments, uh, uh, starting tomorrow at Westville. And then the semi-finals and final will be this weekend, um, if they make it out of the first round. So, uh, congratulations to those players, um, and they're, they're such good kids too. Um, so we've seen a lot of good sportsmanship, sportsmanship from them, uh, throughout the season. Uh, middle of year testing is going on right now, so, um, we took I-Learn checkpoint one. I discussed that at a previous board meeting, but, uh, grade levels are starting to take I-Learn checkpoint two, which is the windows opens through February. Um, so that data will be available as soon as they, as soon as third through sixth grade takes that. NWEA, our K through two students are taking NWEA middle of year testing. Um, K through three, um, is administrative phonics assessment, uh, to see how they are progressing throughout the year. And then our textbooks, our math and reading textbooks have, uh, beginning, middle and year, end of year testing, so they're taking that as well. So there's a lot of testing, but we want to, uh, kind of take a, a mid-year pause and see how much growth we've had so far. So, uh, the students will take that testing before break and then our data team will look at it after break and make some adjustments to some of our academic intervention groups. Um, we have social emotional learning groups going on as well, so we want to focus on academic small groups, but we also want to focus on the social, social emotional side. So Mrs. Gurkey, our school counselor, and this, this Perez, our, um, social worker, meet with, um, certain students from all grade levels, uh, based on internal and external indicators that, uh, teachers fill out a rating scale of all the students. And, uh, students are flagged for different indicators, whether it's anxiety or, um, you know, poor behavior in the classroom or some, where there's a need for social emotional learning. And so once a week, um, they're meeting with our, uh, either school counselor or school social worker. So we're very grateful for those groups going on. And then finally, uh, this was in the consent agenda, but just to keep you updated, uh, Mr. Mulkey, uh, will have, will have a leave, uh, coming up and his room will be covered by two different people, very familiar faces. Uh, but Mrs. Blaskowitz, Sharon Blaskowitz will cover the first half of that leave and then Aaron Cuff will cover the second half. She's covering Mrs. Colburn's, uh, maternity leave and then that will end and then Mrs. Cuff will, uh, step into that fifth grade classroom. So everything personnel staffing wise will be covered.
Then we also officially approved pre-K.
That's correct.
Tonight, it's been a, you know, in the makings for a while, but it was, you know, waiting on resignation. And then, you know, Mrs. Gulab stepping into special education, Mrs. Gates.
Mrs. Gates is doing a very, very good job. Um, it was very, actually a very seamless transition for both special education and for, um, pre-K. So we're very happy with, with how things are running right now.
Any questions for Mr. Kimmel?
I came in to observe the kindergarten in a first grade class.
Yes.
On the new reading phonics program. I fly, is that what it is?
You fly.
You fly, I fly.
You fly, I fly.
Yeah, I knew it had fly, yeah. But it was, I think you went, you saw it too, didn't you? When you, when you...
Yeah.
It's an amazing program and the kids just seemed to, I mean, took right to it. And I mean, they, it's a pretty impressive to see.
Yeah, they're doing a nice job and teachers are jumping up. You also, I walked in when you were in Mrs. Perez's, uh, Title One class too. So they're getting more intensive, smaller groups in there. Yeah, it, it's a program that works. It's a program that honestly, if you went in there, you would say it's going back to the basics. Like it's how I learned.
It's phonics.
Yeah, it's phonics. It's how many of us learned how to read. And then we kind of philosophically got away with it, got away from it and went to different strategies. Yeah, now we're back. The pendulum swings back, so...
Yeah.
We're always trying to reinvent the wheel, you know?
It all goes cycles. Thank you, Mr. Kimmel.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mills.
Well, I'll take the compliment that he said, uh, beauty. All right, well, good evening, guys. Um, just want to kind of give you a, a little heads up on our junior senior high size. So next week, we're already here to finals week. Um, so that'll be at the tail end of the week. I know teachers are prepping leading up to that, getting the last little bits in for their curriculum. Uh, hopefully you're, I don't know if maybe you were able to make the adjustment last Friday, but we had with the weather on Thursday, we had to change our band concert over to Friday, but it was a, was really well attended for being such short notice and be on a Friday night. Not a lot of people make, uh, change their Friday night plans. But once again, I think the winner, uh, winner concert was, went, went without a hitch. I had to be a fill-in for Mrs. Barnes. Mrs. Barnes was actually supposed to do the, uh, the narration of one of them, so, of one of the songs. So I had to step in for her on that and fill in her shoes for that. So kudos on you, we can normally do that. That's a little bit harder than, than it looks like. Um, but also if you saw in my, uh, report, I did share some, uh, I-Learn checkpoints for you guys for our I-Learn checkpoint one. Uh, we did finalize those probably a little bit after, I think, elementary did. We have a few, we have a few straggler kids that just hadn't completed their, uh, testing. But if you, when you look back at that, we, when you look at the performance of our checkpoints from last year to this year, we were pretty comparable on that. Um, if, when you look at the ELA checkpoint specifically, we've been very, I guess, um, above normal, above average. And that's usually our strength that we have. And once again, we are thirty-four percent of our kids right now in that checkpoint one. It's not all but standards that it's looking at, it's just a couple standards here and there. But we're thirty-four percent compared to the state's thirty-three percent that are passing. That's above average or proficient. Um, and then for the eighth grade, they were at forty-one percent, uh, were at or above average proficient compared to the state's thirty-eight percent. So once again, still outperforming the state, which is what we want to see. And that allows our teachers that are primarily, it's Mrs. Colter, because she's the English teacher for seventh and eighth grade, to be able to hone her instructions and to continue to foster that growth, uh, for them. But very, very pleased to see that. And looking at the other areas of the ELA, they are, the low proficients are actually much better than the state. So we actually only had twenty-eight percent of our kids were below in seventh grade. Forty-one percent of the state's seventh graders were below. percent of the state's seventh graders were below. And ELA for English for the eighth graders was twenty-three percent of our students are below average compared to thirty-three percent of the state. So, I like those numbers being lower and the other numbers being higher, so we're going to continue to push those ELA scores. And then the math, I was really pleased to see, actually, the seventh graders are really strong right now. We're at forty-nine percent of our seventh graders are at or above proficiency, and then the state currently right now is at thirty-seven percent. So, very happy to see those numbers. That's been a big turn from the last few years. Once again, the below for math for seventh grade is only at twenty-six percent compared to the state's forty-two percent are below. So, those are numbers are very, a really good spot for us. And then the eighth graders for theirs, we have thirty-eight percent are above or at, and thirty-three percent are, for the state, are at or above. So, we're about five percent increase compared to the state. So, just continue to push those kids through and achieve those scores for math as well as ELA. I'd like to see what those numbers will jump up to when they look at different standards coming to the second checkpoint that will start in January here. Once again, I know Mrs. Barnes, for the work-based learning, I want to just give one more kudo out to Mrs. Barnes for having a fantastic start for her work-based learning. I couldn't think of a different, any other person that could have taken that program from the ground level and jumped it to where it is right now. I can't wait to see the growth that it continues to do throughout this year as well as the years beyond this. And then just jumping to my athletic updates here, so girls' varsity basketball and JV's in session are actually playing tonight at Morgan Township. They're a little bit of a slower start than we've seen in years past. They've had a couple wins, hopefully bouncing back tonight with a second PCC win against Morgan Township. They actually, we just moved our senior night for them. It's going to be right after winter break on the fifth of January against Hobart. That's the Monday that we come back from break. And then, for girls' varsity, we are, JV and a varsity tournament that we're going to host over winter break here at South Central. It's going to be, I believe it's the twenty-seventh, I believe, on them for that. And then, coming up pretty soon, I think before the next board meeting, we have our JV-PCC tournament for both boys and girls will be the week of the seventh through the tenth. So, I think that's the next board meeting week, so to speak, so just keep that on your radars there. Our boys' basketball team, they've had a pretty good start. They're already two and one in the season. Looking to continue to build that program. And our boys, our seventh and eighth grade junior high boys are playing actually tonight on the south, and everybody just heard them on the radio. They're with Mrs. Santana. They're playing this evening against Boom Grove. And then next week, they'll actually be part of the PCC middle school tournament, and we will host the second round here on the seventeenth of that. But a lot of things happening, a lot more sports kind of getting thrown into the thick of things since we met last, and so, but love seeing all the positivity that's going around this tail end of this first semester here.
Okay. Anybody have any questions for Mr. Mills?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next on the administrative report is the school calendar for the 2026-27 school year. So, it's hard to believe it's already that time, but school corporations throughout the county and state have been working on their school year calendars for the 2026-27 school year. So, I gathered information and discussed calendars with other area superintendents, and also gathered input from our teachers and staff. As in past years, we've attempted to stay similar to other districts in the county for shared services, like our special education and career and technical education offerings at the AK Smith Career Center. So, the proposed 2026-27 calendar that's in your packet, and I'll put it up here on the screen in a second, very similar to this year's calendar with corresponding start date, which would be August twelfth, corresponding dates for fall break, Thanksgiving break, Christmas break, spring break, just a couple minor, a couple minor changes. But, so here is the proposed calendar. We'd have similar start date to, New Prairie was the only district in the county left that was still starting the week before, but the last I talked to their superintendent, they were going to push to a similar start date for us. So, we'd start August twelfth after two teacher workdays. The only date in September is Labor Day. October, fall break, would be the fifteenth and sixteenth. We'd keep our two built-in virtual learning days for teacher professional development, which would be November second and March third. Thanksgiving break would stay at three days. Christmas break would stay at two weeks. We'd have the three built-in snow makeup days, January eighteenth, February twelfth, and May seventh. Spring break would be that first full week of April. Good Friday is March twenty-sixth, so we go off that Friday and then come back a week and then go to spring break. So, the main difference that you might see would be, we moved the teacher workday from that Friday, like, May twenty-eighth. We put it at January fourth for teachers to have workday when they come back from Christmas break to finalize grades, prepare for second semester. And then the proposal would be that our last student day on May twenty-seventh would be an early release day, where we would release students at noon, and then the teachers would have the afternoon to close out their classrooms and check out. And then, of course, if a teacher needed to come out on Friday, the principals would still be here. But the early release on the last day of school, we are considered a performance-qualified school district, so that allows us technically to count minutes instead of hours. So, our school day is a lot longer than the state requirement, so we have, technically, we have a lot of flexibility there. So, we're going to start by doing this, you know, more and more schools have started doing that. I know the, you know, the teachers have expressed that desire to me for quite a while now as well, you know, to the point where, you know, maybe we were thinking about throwing it out even for this year, but certainly not ready to present that to you yet. But, yeah, otherwise, graduation will be June sixth, which is the corresponding date. It's always been the first Sunday in June, so if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer those, or...
So, then they come back to school on the fifth?
Yeah, that's a change pretty...
Yes, yes. So, students...
I assume it's the work day.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, teachers would come back on the fourth for a work day, and students would come back on January fifth then. Yeah, other than that, it is pretty much identical. We did add one more registration day. Lisa and Kelly wanted to add a third day back. We dropped it to two days last year. They wanted to do three again for next year, so we added July twenty-eighth back as a registration day. But, yeah, otherwise, you know, the teachers' input on, you know, the breaks, you know, a lot of those were overwhelming as far as wanting to keep fall break the way it was, Thanksgiving break as well, keep the snow makeup days in, et cetera. So, like to get, you know, I already have people asking for it, you know, for spring break for twenty-seven, and, you know, we used to not approve this till, like, February, sometimes March, but we've kind of progressively gotten earlier since I've been superintendent, and it seems to just help people in their planning, because a lot of times over Christmas break, I feel like people are planning their, like, spring break a year and a half out, so, or at least people ask me fairly often. So...
Oh, wow.
So, yeah, if you have any questions, would be happy to answer those. If not, ask for your consideration to adopt this calendar.
Anything else? Anybody make a motion to adopt the proposed school calendar, twenty-six, twenty-seven?
Probably.
Second?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose name? New calendar.
Very good, thank you. And then the last thing on the administrative report is, I just wanted to talk a little bit about our educational excellence award. I know I've already kind of shared it with you, but I got to bring the beauty with me here. So, on Friday, November twenty-first, President Allen and part of our administrative team, which was myself, Mr. Mills, Mr. Budka, and Mrs. Camrath, traveled to Indianapolis to take part in the Indiana Department of Education's Educational Excellence Award Gala, or Gala, for 2025. Really was an amazing event. It was held in the beautiful Indiana Roof Ballroom. We were awarded the Excellence in Professional Learning and Leadership Development, which was one of seven areas recognized by the Department of Education. Back in September, Mrs. Camrath, Mr. Kimmel, Mr. Mills, and myself worked on the application to be considered for these awards. Mrs. Camrath coordinates and facilitates most of our professional development and professional learning for teachers, so she specifically worked on that award. She submitted the summer PD opportunities that we give to our teachers, our PLC groups, which are like our grade level and department meetings, Tech Mondays that are offered, among other, PD that she does, and also emphasized our one-hundred-percent teacher retention rate for this year. And, you know, Mrs. Allen can attest, and Mr. Mills and Mr. Budka, it was really a special event to be among the state's best.
And they called our name. That was one thing they mentioned, was our retention rate for teachers. They said that's, you know, so it's pretty impressive. You don't see that very often, so, but it was very nice.
Yeah, it was.
It was fancy.
It was. Yeah, I don't do fancy things very often, but it was, yeah, it was very nice. So, I just wanted to showcase our beautiful award, so...
Okay.
And that concludes my administrative report.
Keep that on your desk.
Crystal's desk, I wouldn't know if people could...
He ate off of it today.
It takes a...
Have you seen my award?
My badge.
Anything else to come before the board?
Well, I don't know if we have an update with our community seat.
Oh, for the Building Corporation. So, yeah, so I did, so for what Mr. Wade's talking about, for the Building Corporation, so the school board is obviously our elected body, and then there's a Building Corporation, which are appointed individuals, and they help oversee the financials when it comes to, like, our debt service, our tax rate, and when we issue bonds. Mr. Randy Goodwin was one of the members, longtime member of the Building Corporation, and unfortunately, Mr. Goodwin passed away. So, I did reach out to Kristin McClellan, who is the bond counsel attorney of ours through Ice Miller, and she essentially said that the board would appoint a new member to the Building Corporation when we are ready. So, I was going to try to find that email real quick. Yeah, she said that the board would approve the replacement, and so would the Building Corporation. So, yeah, if the board has someone in mind or wants to start thinking about someone to appoint, the question I need to ask is Township.
Does it have to come from Clinton?
It's Clinton Township.
So, we've got a Hannah, we've got a Noble, and then that's Clinton, so it must have to be...
Because Kim Huesman's Hannah.
And Judd.
Judd is Noble, so...
Who has been a board member from Clinton Township? That'd be a good person.
Yeah, I mean, like, Dom, yeah, Dom Vitaro, or maybe Todd Morrow, our previous Clinton Township board members, although I don't know if Todd, does Todd still live?
I think so.
In the same place?
Do you think he still does? I thought...
Did they move? Oh, I don't know. I think Dom's still...
You can think about it. I just, we just didn't know the process or what was...
Yeah, so...
I would just think, I was just thinking, what do you guys think?
That sounds good. Do have one.
Not opposed to anybody, so...
Well, I'm not either.
Yeah, and she just said that once the board has someone in mind, that to reach out to her, and she'll help, you know, facilitate the process, but that it would be a resolution that would need to be passed, and then just, it would need to be in the board meeting minutes to show that that was done. So, yeah, so if, assuming it's got to be a Clinton Township representative, if, you know, maybe a previous board member, and she actually did mention that.
Oh, did she?
That's often who boards look to, are previous board members, or, I don't know if you, you know, got a neighbor in Clinton Township that, you know...
Nobody likes them.
You could think of, but...
I'm just kidding, yeah.
Yeah, so I'll verify for sure that it does need to be Clinton, but assuming the setup...
I believe it does.
Yeah, I think it does, too.
And then, yeah, because if we, you know, if we have capacity and do, like, a general obligation bond to support the operations fund...
Yeah.
If we issue in twenty-six to take on that in-debt service in twenty-seven, then probably this summer, we'll need to convene the Building Corporation, so, yeah, within the next few months, we'll want to, yeah, get someone...
We'll reach out to a few to see if they even want them, and there's not a whole lot they do, but make sure they were willing to accept, so...
Anything else? Motion to adjourn?
I'll make that motion.
Second?
I'll second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose name? Need to adjourn.